Okay.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty four. Anything to add or remove to the agenda?
Um, I was just hoping to have a dialogue about that campfire.
December solstice?
Yeah, uh, well, it was, it's not going to be around this, but yeah, if just maybe new, new business, I don't know where it belongs exactly, but.
Okay. Does the summer storytelling fire?
Yes.
New business sound right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we agree that we would pick a date when you were in next? Is that what we said? Or is that what we're going to talk about?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, sorry, you can't tell I'm looking at you.
Were we gonna pick a date tonight or were, I think we were waiting for your travel plans to solidify, right?
I have a date and I had emailed Emily and we were kind of going, I had never replied to her about a good start time. So I just went about that date to see if it works for anybody besides me. And then if it does, for a good start time, because Emily was like, do we do it around dusk? Will people come back out? You know, that was the question I was hoping to have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, secretary's report, uh, does anybody have anything to add or change to the minutes?
I don't print out the minutes, because minutes are amazing. I already print out an impressive amount of paper for this meeting. Please look at the minutes before you get here. Thank you.
Good call.
Okay, uh, make a motion to affect the minutes as recorded?
I believe that we accept the minutes.
Second it, all in favor? Hey, I'm treasure.
Um, nothing to report that's unusual that we haven't already talked about. In more general ledger, unless you have something, Emily.
No, we seem like the same. Yeah, we're about, we're about in the same, same spot with most things, um. Doing pretty good on the income lines. That's all I really wanted to say in terms of like the in-house book sale printing, out of town fees will probably surpass our out of town fee projection. This year, which is great, um, and yeah, I think, I think we're in pretty good, good shape with expenses. And as always, I welcome anybody with questions about the confusing, confusing balance or budget status report to come see me anytime.
Right, lively director's report.
We went to, uh, I went to the Wyndham County librarians meeting, which we do by Zoom most of the year, and then once in person every year, um, was good. Lots of concern about the federal funding situation that we just talked about last time. Uh, Lydia Taff Public Library is coming on to the Catamount Network and, um, I've been helping them along with their go live as they're, they're. One of their closest libraries that's also in Catamount. Uh, Julia and Susan went to the summer reading program brainstorming session at Rockingham Library. And they're feeling like they're in great shape to do an awesome summer reading program using very little money. As usual, using a bunch of recycled materials and a couple of paid performers. Um, we had a regular staff meeting and talked about, uh, serving patrons with Alzheimer's and dementia. And we got our new computers and they're awesome and Amber's on the, on the screen of all of them.
I am? How?
Never mind. You hadn't noticed it. It's not just.
When we hung up the phone.
Yeah, 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 it's not just Amber. Sorry to scare you. I figured.
Be mortified.
Um, we, uh, all of the Vermont reading programs were good. The teen programming one was challenging. I don't, I don't know that anybody came to the read with a dog. One teen programming timing has been challenging. Um, the writer salon by Zoom was really good. Great turnout. Ben's program was excellent. If only he was here to receive your adulation, um, but Penny and Janice, which was great. Roger Alby is reading tomorrow night. I spelled his name wrong there. Um, Jim will be hosting two L's, two E's.
There's two L's.
Yeah, I know.
That's how I spell.
Yeah, that's how I spell it too.
I'm pretty, he sent me an email and I think it's two L's, two, two E's are. Yeah, anyway, but Jim and Carolyn are hosting, which I really appreciate. Thank you guys. Um, Rich Grunbein is doing a presentation about his Wildflowers book on Monday and Ben is hosting that one.
I think also, I think Jessica.
Jessica might also come with, yeah, that's great. And we're doing our Tuber Tuesday Dahlia tuber swap on April twenty second, the very next day. And yes, Jim, there, people are getting really excited about it. Um, landmark college students are, are coming for an Earth Week presentation. Um, it's like the Chemistry Association of America. They're, they're in the student chapter and they're going to be doing a cool like drop in demo all day on Saturday about, not this coming Saturday, but the next about glaciers. And I know it involves Pop Rocks, speaking of nostalgic candy.
Yeah.
Yes. The pop, but it's, it's not just, it's like Pop Rocks for science, not just eating of a Pop Rocks.
But we'll get to eat Pop Rocks.
There might also be the eating of Pop Rocks.
Like I have a lot of fond memories.
Um, Virgilo, the therapy dog is having his book release party here next Thursday. And apparently a lot of the people he visits in like the fire departments and the police stations and the veterans homes and, and like different schools are all coming to see it. Yeah, and he's gonna quote unquote, sign his books. They had, they had a stamp made, they had a stamp made of his paw, like a rubber stamp. Which is great. Um, we have well surpassed our thirty thousand dollar mark and not just because Jim. Had motivated everybody to, to kick in, but because people have also been making really nice donations in the wake of the I N L S fundings. Even though we have not put out any kind of call because we don't yet know. How that psycho chick will fall, yeah.
Kind of wondered if that might happen.
Yeah, I mean, and that's with no, you know, no shaking the tree from me. Um, there's just the library trustee fact is about how much money we made at the last book sale and. And that was with only one dinosaur waving at cars. Just putting it out. No, that was kind of a joke unless someone has another.
Double the amount.
Just posited that it might make an impact if anyone else has a T-Rex, one of those inflatable T-Rex or another dinosaur outfit.
I feel like Jim mentioned a unicorn.
I know.
Sadly, disabled.
Before the last book sale, hence the, hence the other mystical.
We could attract a whole different demographic with uniform.
Maybe the person that used to walk around in front of Liberty Tax and the.
Oh, yeah.
The available tax.
I really hope that person was getting paid more than, more than a volunteer.
Not enough.
Probably not, no. Yeah, thank you guys. Any questions on the director's report? Do you at Tuber Tuesday?
Yeah.
I only have gladiolus though.
That's allowed. Bulbs are allowed. That's why we stopped.
I think they're called corns.
Yeah.
Too many dahlias.
You guys do at your house? You're coming to the swap?
I don't know. The dahlias aren't my problem.
Okay.
I, I don't know if I can make it to the swap. I'll take some off your hands.
You guys can't be making side deals. In front of the swap, the swap person.
Um, so those of you who were here last meeting probably remember that we talked about adding a vice chair position to our slate of officers. Um, we wanted to give everyone a chance to think about that for a month. And so. Tonight's the night where we're, we're asking for nominations. Does anybody have any nominations or does anybody need a refresher on what the responsibility of the vice chair will be?
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I mean, essentially it's stepping in for the chair in the event that the chair can, cannot run the meeting. So that would likely be, you know. Emergency last minute, you know, illness or something like that, or in the event of what happened last meeting where the chair's term has ended. And we need to elect a new chair. Um, we, we, we kind of like did the pro ten thing last. Last month in order to make that happen, but this would facilitate the process, having a vice chair to do that.
Have there been volunteer councils, any interest?
Nobody has, nobody has been beating down the door to mine all. It's a pretty low and I'm a pretty dependable person. I'm not planning on flaking out, you know, like by monthly or anything.
Obvious specific. I find Amber's statement to be true. I find it to be pretty dependable.
Yeah. So I guess if there are no nominations, does anyone want to self nominate themselves?
People who aren't already officers and not the library director.
I can do that.
Are you sure? All right, yay. So we need a motion for her, yes, right? Um, so I'd like to make a motion to elect Susan to the position of vice chair of the Putney Library Trustees.
Well, second one.
Any questions? All in favor?
I think it's a low, a low, uh.
It'll be a little lift.
I wanted to know that it doesn't mean I'm going like the way when we do our board vice president becomes president. I'm not looking for that.
Firewall in between those two.
Yeah, thank you.
That's not yet one of the duties.
Now we'll go change.
Yeah, we're gonna change.
Um, okay, committee reports.
Oh, wait, do you have a question?
Yeah, who seconded that?
Uh, Penny did.
Penny, and then if we go back, who seconded the, uh? The.
Nancy.
Secretary's report?
Nancy.
All right, yeah, I can't hear that, so.
Okay.
Uh, the owl doesn't move for some reason. For that, so gonna have to bother people, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Maybe we should just sit when we second something or.
Could say our name.
Say our name for you.
Oh, we can't hear you now.
Oh, you, you muted yourself, Trish.
I muted myself, sorry.
Okay. She's too busy with the rock and roll music in the background.
So for finance, uh, Janice made me a handy cheat sheet of when things should happen in the year and, um.
Do I need to contact Tony and stuff?
Well, I mean, it was on the list, like, are we feeling like we want to meet?
Seems like a good time to talk to him.
Yeah, or a really scary.
He'll make us feel better.
Yeah, he came and chilled us out, um, in early COVID.
We have no immediate need for the funds, so we shouldn't be panicking.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, we were thinking possibly June, um, since May is going to be riding the heels.
I'll contact him tomorrow, see what his availability is. What's the date? Do we know June?
It's knowable, June seventeen. But actually, I'm gonna campaign to have it be June twenty fourth.
I will, I will be away.
You'll be away.
I'm actually gonna be away on the seventeenth.
I'm gonna be away on the seventeenth.
You're, I'm, I'm gonna be away on the seventeenth.
Well, it's, it's fine because you don't need a vice chair on the twenty fourth. Maybe you need.
I'm actually gonna be out of town on the twenty fourth too. Sorry, I didn't think about that with the ocean camping trip.
It's okay. You gotta see the trolls.
Um, yeah, I've seen the trolls.
To have it on a Wednesday or Monday, or is that like? Something that can't be done.
It's never happened. But the.
The ten is right.
Huh? Yeah, um, no, no, sorry. That's like when I'm actually really going on vacation, so.
Can we do the tenth? No.
You guys can't, I mean, if you don't need, and actually, no, you can't do the tenth because there's another program here.
Hmm. When you were, you were gonna contact, I'm wondering if we can circle back to the June meeting. I don't think that I can join remotely from the ocean, but I might be able to join remotely before, when we.
I will not, or, oh, on the twenty.
I can do that, right? I can share remotely.
Yeah.
And I'll be in Yosemite visiting Danielson.
Sounds great.
So I doubt I'm gonna have very good service.
Do you guys, do we want to circle back to that or do we just want to say the twenty fourth now? Yeah, are enough people able to come? Okay.
I should be able to.
I'm coming in. So then, yeah, I guess if we say the twenty fourth, then you have that information for Tony. Did you get all of that, Trish? Okay.
Well, she's giving them.
All right, okay. Um.
And, uh, our funds did go down eight thousand dollars from, I could send these to you, Trish. Um, from three seventy seven, three eighteen was the original value. Um, the value as of March thirty first was three sixty eight, four seventy seven.
Can, if you say it again, I'll just put it in the chat for Trish.
Yeah, three seven seven, three one eight was the original.
Yeah.
Three six eight, four seven seven.
Emily, I got it.
Okay, cool.
And it will certainly have gone down more when the next together statement.
Yeah, the statement cut off mercifully early so that we could do this in two painful steps.
Um, institutional long range planning?
No, we have that meeting later in the summer. Oh, no, that's our emergency plan meeting.
Yeah.
No, there's no institutional long range planning.
By the way, I'm on the committee with you now.
Yeah.
I think so. Isn't that the committee I said I'd be on?
Um, I didn't bring it tonight. It was, yes, because we needed someone else on that committee and.
And I said, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I am, I'm not sure what the committee is doing, so we should probably talk at some point.
We can, yeah.
Uh, nominating committee, I don't think there's anything to report, uh, nor with personnel, uh, policy and bylaws. Who's that? That's.
Janice was, Janice was passing something on to the po- policy and bylaws, right?
Yeah, she had some things she was marking up.
Okay, I don't know that that transition's been made yet.
I don't know if it has, she hasn't sent anything to me yet, so maybe I can shake her down.
Okay, yeah, you're gonna see her. You want to do that? That's great.
Yes, little did she know that coffee at the diner meant. Okay. Um, buildings and grounds?
Looks nice out there.
The gardener's coming tomorrow to do the spring cleanup, which is great.
Looks pretty good already.
Yeah, it's on its way.
I, um, yesterday, when it was so beautiful, I was watching like kids frolicking on the stone wall out there when I was driving by.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Um, fundraising. So also on my handy calendar that Janice made for me was right, beginning to think about the appeal.
Yeah.
Because we have two more meetings and then we break for the summer. Um, so ideally, if we can go into the summer with a plan, then we're ready to hit the ground running in September. When we come back together, um.
Think did we approve a plan and, and have it printed over the summer?
Last year, yeah, last year we did, which was really nice because I feel like all the other years had been like this, like mad rush in September to get things.
Part of the reasoning for that is, um, we receive a grant of printing services from CNS wholesale grocers, which is very generous and makes a big difference. But they need things pretty far in advance and they, that's their busy season, so we have to get it to them by, I think by October first in order to have it in hand by. It might even be September first in order to have it in hand by the time that. Year and appeals kind of usually land for people. So we, if we, we front loaded the design and we reused a lot of the design from the year prior.
Yeah.
Um.
Which honestly feels like we could do again this year. It's birthday themed, we're celebrating the birthday year. Um, so maybe it makes sense for the fundraising committee to meet. May is so.
May so.
Right now, so maybe like in early June before the meeting, um, so that we can have a plan to bring to the, the June meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, early June fundraising committee meeting. I can send out a doodle poll for that, June fundraising meeting, doodle, all right. Beware the doodle fundraising committee. Uh, my fundraising and development class, we've been talking, we just did a big thing about. Appeals this past, this past session, it was really good and there were some really great practical tidbits, so I'll be bringing those.
When you say appeal, are you talking about the thing that goes in the mail?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if there were other. Aspects of it.
No, that's our, well, we also try to have graphics that we use for social media and the newsletter, so. It, but it all comes out of the thing we send in the mail, which I think is the main way people donate, but then we have those other things to kind of. Remind everyone like, hey, remember that thing we sent you in the mail?
And last year we added in a, a mid-cycle postcard.
Yeah, just good, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think, did that have a call? I don't know.
It wasn't actually a call. It was, it was a, it was about the summer reading program, but it was like just sort of keeping the library in people's. You know, minds and, you know, putting out like at least one of the things that we were offering in the summer.
Yeah.
And when we do our newsletters, is it always in the newsletter?
It's always in the newsletter during that time. Yeah. But I learned from my course, you're supposed to agitate people every single day of the final week of the year. Kevin's like, yep.
We don't do that, but I, I can share our best practices too. You and I can talk about.
It seems like the libraries comes out before the December Christmas mash of fundraising, doesn't it?
True, if we, if we're on top of our business, yeah. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you, I also find that everyone's expecting it. They, they might get it out earlier, but then it gets lost. So actually everyone's expecting it in November, December is my experience. Um. We, we do two different things. We do something in October, which is our annual report and then we. Send it out, send out the annual appeal in November.
So you stun them with all of the facts and beautiful pictures and.
Well, we only send the annual reports people have given before.
Yeah. Well, we also need to decide whether this is a year where we do full, well, I think we did full zip code two years ago.
Uh, we did it the first year we had Chrissy design.
Yeah, okay.
The appeal for us, so that would have been two years ago.
Okay, so this is probably, so we do a full zip code every. Three or four years and then we'll, and then we just sent to previous donors in the years between.
And do you find that the full zip code gets?
Yeah, it gets, it, but it's not, it's not huge. It's really interesting. I think it's also. New people have moved to town, new library patrons, things like that, who might, I don't know, who might have become donors through the newsletter otherwise, but. The majority of people give in response to the mail thing and they give by check. And I learned that the, our numbers for that are not weird. I've always been like. Older people don't give online, but apparently that matches up with everybody in, in the fundraising class and with like national statistics about it.
Can you give online to the library? I can see I'll send a check, but.
Yeah, you can do PayPal.
I do wonder if that's eventually gonna start to show because I feel like, like I've been resisting buying new checks. For like several months now and I'm like, oh, I can't live without these.
Yeah, 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 I pay my rent with them. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I pay all my bills online.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can never find checks when I.
When you need them.
Need one once a year. It's Eric McGowan, that's the only. If I have an emergency need.
Yeah, I feel like even my plugg, I take Venmo now, so. So does mine.
My two, I plow my own driveway, but sometimes I'm away and I need him to come by.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll do, we'll do an early June meeting for fundraising committee and talk appeal.
Great, um, strategic planning, uh, so we thought we would update a little bit on the retreat, including ordering sandwiches.
You all have a form in your packet, it's the last thing. I need you to, yes, exemplary. Wait, okay, and you're good on whatever bread that came on? Okay, good. Thank you.
Who's making the food?
The general store. Not Emily. So I want your sandwich forms tonight and you're not leaving.
Oh.
Tell me what sandwich.
Okay. I'm gonna keep my brain on this track right now, but I.
Yes, no, I will shake you down and Trish, I'll send you the sandwich form and also to, um, to Ben and Jessica who aren't here.
Yeah. Um, do we have any other updates? I think just everybody knows the time and the place, right? We're gonna be at Putney Community Cares. So we're may worthless.
May ten.
May ten, um, when do we start?
What time?
Eleven is when you guys, when people who are not part of the strategic planning committee show up. Yes. Okay. Um, town library relationship. Okay. Um, the garden.
Daffodils are happening.
Yeah, we're meeting, um, April twenty seventh.
Cool.
One of the little trees, there's like four of them across the road.
Those are the Hawthorns, thornless Hawthorns.
Thornless Hawthorn.
Well, just.
Just a half, yeah. Well, there's not even a thought.
Yeah. Uh, fair compensation.
There's a minute more discussion.
And anniversary, which I think we decided we were gonna switch to special events, so I'll make that change. And we'll talk about Trish's, about the summer.
Yeah.
Fire in a bit. Okay, old unfinished business. Um, I had asked Emily if she wanted to update us on. How the federal defunding is affecting us or potentially going to affect us here.
Well, we did, we put this on the agenda like a week and a half ago and we, there's still no, there's no news. Um, they have completely. Got to the I M L S. I think they told all the employees that May third or something like that was their last day. A lot of states have received notice about things being canceled and I think to make things visible, some, I've seen notices being like. Such and such library district, I L, uh, I L L, like interlibrary loan is suspended. Um, we are not there. We haven't received word from the Department of Libraries, how their funding is going to be rearranged or what the impact is going to be on, on the individual libraries yet. Yeah, I, as I mentioned, some people were just proactively making donations. I felt like we should wait until we have something to say, like. X Y Z was cut from the state library budget, which impacts us, you know, and it has some more solid information to give people. But it is a possible thing that we could do, um, even, you know, before the appeal potentially, especially if we're gonna be hit particularly hard. I really don't know what to brace for, um, the interlibrary loan grant that we received. The grant that subsidizes the courier is like, we have it here in the income. It's like this year was six hundred and eighty-three dollars, um, and eighty cents, but it's. There's all of these other things like consult, they're, the consulting stuff, the continuing education, these things that we don't think about, um, because we don't pay for them. Are, are just gonna probably be changed, so I will keep you all appraised of it, but right now it's, we're still in the place of. Even though things have become more clearly grim, we, we don't know, you know, what the impact is on Putney Public Library.
I would suggest that, um, you kind of get ready with some statistics so that you can hit the ground running as soon as that happens.
Yeah.
Like, you know, how many people each year benefit from the interlibrary loan, you know, how many, oh, you know, all the other areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely will.
Cause our fundraising consultancy, because we have a Save America Treasury grant and.
That you're in the middle of?
Yeah, just in the design phase.
Yeah.
Um, and basically if that gets pulled, um. You know, N E H grants have gotten pulled.
Yeah.
Um, we will use that as a call to action.
Yeah, that's an I M L S grant, right? Save America's treasure.
No, it's a national park service. It's historic preservation.
Good, good.
But, and I think there is one with, anyway, yeah.
I just got one at the Rockingham Library, but it's an I M L S.
Yeah, no, this is, maybe there's a different, different, but. Oh, sorry, it's like courier service isn't funded, but it's not just like everyone, every library has to fund courier service for, to work, right?
Yeah.
It's not just like, oh, find six hundred dollars.
Right.
Probably.
It's, that subsidizes us directly and then we pay, well, we and Putney School pay the rest of that bill. Um, it's. The six hundred dollars is to defray from the cost that we incur. For it, so all of the libraries are paying for it. I think that some libraries might have to let it go completely if they, if they don't receive it. The cost covers one half of one stop per week. So for us, we do two stops per week and Putney School splits it with us. Putney School actually pays two thirds of the bill, which is really generous. Um, and it won't be devastating. We're still gonna do it, but it, who knows what's gonna happen with the cost of it if a whole bunch of libraries have to drop out.
Just wondering, will they even do it?
Will they even do it, but then that.
They can't do it. You can't get a book from them.
We can't get a book from them.
Even contract with the courier.
Exactly.
I guess it worth it for the green.
That's a big question. It's not Green Mountain anymore. It's someone else because it wasn't worth it for Green.
Now, would the state make up that or?
That's, they can't, like, who knows? I, I don't know. Um, I'm not sure what they're gonna choose to let go of and what they're gonna prioritize, but it might be need, need based. It might be that we pay our full courier bill. And smaller libraries that can't, you know, that need it in order to, to continue to offer interlibrary loan. Receive it because that, it used to defray from postal costs. And there were some libraries that once the grant ran out or once their budget was up, they would refuse interlibrary loan. Requests from other libraries and requests from their patrons. They'd say, I'm sorry, the money's gone for the year. We can't get this book. So it would be pretty grim to, to go back to that. It's not gonna go away for Putney Library. I believe in our ability to make up. The shortfall and it's so important to what we do, especially because we're part of the Catamount Consortium and it actually requires that we all have at least one courier stop a week. And it's a massive service to our patrons. Our numbers are huge.
Preserve the number of books that go out.
Yeah.
I do think it's a really concrete example for the public to see. This is like something that. We could potentially be having to step up to cover the costs because of the defunding. So I think that's, it's just something that I think everybody uses, right? At some point or another.
I think that everybody that borrows, borrows physical items from the library uses it.
Yeah.
Um, or at least can, even if you don't use it, you can imagine, you know, you can put a mold on a book.
Yeah, yeah. And I think like that was something, I thought that you and Star both. Were really great in that article in the comments. Like I think the more opportunities there are to be. Helping the public understand, you know, how this is impacting libraries.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, so definitely get your statistics together.
And that's something we gather and have, you know, that I could pull together really quickly, but you're right, we should probably have that. Ready. Uh, we got an email from, um, I got an email from Vermont Historical Society today saying our grant. Our NEH grant got yanked, their NEH grant got yanked and it was a two-year thing, but the, the, and then they were like, thanks to some generous donors. I think they went to their large donors and were like, can you make up the shortfall for the rest of this year? And they said like, we've saved the, you know, we're good through the end of the year, but we're not guaranteed for next year. Can you help us? And like, did an appeal, which I thought, thought was really wise, um, and also just really pointed. It's like they talked about what that grant did. Or what project they were in the middle of and then, and what would happen if they weren't able to do it next year. So. We, you're right. I think we should be ready for that and I really hope that your grant is.
Well, I, I went in Sunday to download some money to pay my engineers and architects, cause I've heard it was being canceled, so I at least. I, I can pay the design fees.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if this had happened last time. I don't think so. This hadn't happened before the last time we all met, but. Star, LaTronica and Brooks Library received the first round of capital improvements funding that I had applied for, for this library and, and. Well, not yet, but it wasn't IMLS, but it is federal money and it's being metted out through the State Department of Libraries, but. She's afraid to start work on the library roof, cause they're gonna remove parts of the roof and it's reimbursement based. So it's like she could begin removing the roof and then the grant gets yanked. So they've, they've decided to delay that until next, until this fall. Just because having no roof is worse than having a leaky roof, I guess in their, in their situation, but Star was basically like, I just couldn't sleep. This whole week thinking about them beginning that work and then potentially not being able to get it to a stable position, like place.
I was just gonna ask you about that grant. Is it even, can you apply for it again or it's just, um?
The, the twenty, the one that I was waiting for to open that was nebulously supposed to open in twenty twenty-five, I have no idea what the status of. It is, we asked in the Wyndham County Librarians Meeting and they said that they were supposed to tell us that until they hear, otherwise we should all. Expect that it's happening, but it's just.
I mean, it's probably unlikely.
It's not the vibe though.
No, I, um, Karen Ashley was out, um, on vacation, but I'm, I'm wanting to talk to her about heat pump money. Potentially coming from somewhere else or going out to bid for the heat pumps, but I'll have news for you guys about that soon. Because that's to me the most emergent capital improvement project that was going to be. Covered potentially by that grant that isn't, you know, that we really need to figure out sometime this summer. Did you have a question?
Well, is, are you familiar with what went on, has been going on, still underway with, uh, the. Department of Education and, and the Vermont schools.
I know about it a, a little bit, but I'm not as.
So, I, I mean, what that's about is, um. Holding federal funds hostage for, until you certify. That you don't do DEI.
Yeah.
In any way, shape or form, defined to include all kinds of stuff. It's so far away from the conventional idea of DEI. It's a different situation, cause the amount of money involved is very substantially greater. But I wouldn't be surprised if something like that, an attempt to, to, to. Get into controlling, uh, the actual substance of what goes on here.
I mean, the thing about that is that a cur, a statewide curriculum or national curriculum standards are something that they do have. You know, the federal government does have.
Right.
It's some, there is some standardization. Among public libraries, there's no standardization. There's no saying like you have to have this, these books or not these books. There's no. They're not coming from anywhere, you know, no one's prescribing it. There's no like, there's no uniting factor.
What they're using though is Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which says that you can't. Overserve one group and, you know, favor one group over another.
Yeah.
It's really just a slippery slope argument to me.
Yeah.
I think the local districts should just be signing the paper and saying, yeah, we do that. And then moving on and waiting for the court case to come.
I haven't been actively concerned about that because I've had other things to be active.
We haven't seen any sign of that.
Not in libraries, not in the way that Vermont is structured, um, not for us. And, and honestly, not for anyone else. I haven't heard about anybody else, like any other public libraries in the country being impacted by the DEI stuff. From federal regulations within their communities, there might, you know, that, that.
That's a different story.
Thing, um, but that's been going on anyway, you know, that from within the communities, but I haven't heard about any public libraries. Public libraries, not school libraries being, um, having pressure put on them for that, but it's, it's, you bring up. Yeah, it's conceivable, but though I don't know what the mechanism would be.
Yeah.
Especially because Vermont, um, passed that bill in the last legislative season, the, the law regarding public libraries or. Or something like that. And part of it was making book banning more difficult. By saying that it's illegal to have people not be able to find representations. Of people like themselves in literature in public libraries. So you're not allowed to say. You're not allowed to, to, nobody's allowed to take away the right to access books with trans characters or, you know. You know, actual people like nonfiction.
You know, all that stuff is, is, is good to get in place. The way the federal government's operating now. Just. Who cares?
Yes.
That means we really can't prepare in any way.
No.
For this, there's nothing kind of to do, but I think. We shouldn't be surprised if sometime in the next six months, something, something just outlandish. I don't know, the, the whole Harvard thing.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
But it's, that was what was happening with the Vermont Public Schools writ large. And the, something, libraries could be sort of at the other end of the spectrum, but on the same.
Yeah.
So anyway, there's, I don't think there's anything to do, but we just be curious.
I just wanna reiterate, we have very little direct connection to federal funding, period. It could all get, it could all.
Right, but, but they could threaten it and maybe there's a lot of the state. They could say, zeroing out everything unless. You, the state sign a certification that everybody in the whole, every library in the whole state is gonna do this, that and the other thing. Which each thing would be totally unacceptable.
Yeah, they actually also have, they have no say over. The Department of Libraries doesn't, isn't in charge of all the libraries. It's not like the Department of Education. I just, you know, just.
Just no money, the Fed, Fed to say, no money unless you.
Get your libraries under control.
Yeah.
They need to sign, everybody needs to sign this.
Yeah.
By next Tuesday, you know, that's, that's how it's been doing.
Yeah. We'll slay that dragon when it.
Right.
Yeah. No, I'll, I'll keep you guys as posted as possible, including sending out the dispatches from the state librarian as they come up between meetings.
Thanks, Emily.
In federal news.
All right, from defunding to funding.
Yeah.
We started to talk about the book sale last month and. My recollection is that we really only made one decision, which was that we wanted to keep the donor preview night.
Yeah.
On Friday, but there are several other decisions that we need to make before it happens next month, um. We need to decide if we're keeping the prices the same. We need to.
I did not print out my notes yet again.
I thought we talked.
Reach a decision on that.
I think, did we talk about it last?
So you made your money, cause you had.
Well, we doubled the prices last year, yeah.
For Saturday and then we, we were, and then we did a half price on Sunday. And it was decided that we should advertise that Sunday's half price, um, to like.
More people.
Get more people in on the Sunday to get those books the hell out this. Yeah, I'm not sure what other, what other decisions. I was, um, there was a suggestion that we make a banner that go over the door that says book sale this weekend. And I can certainly have that printed, but it costs. I think that banner costs seventy-seven dollars and we could do a similar banner in an alternate loud color for. A similar amount of money, should the board authorize it? And if we make it vague enough that it says book sale this weekend.
Yeah. Of course.
Um, so if you guys wanna give me a hundred dollars to make that banner, I will, up to, up to a hundred dollars. To make the banner, I will do it.
Um, as the person who's painted signs the past two years, I would wholeheartedly.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, uh, negate the need to make a sign, but sorry, Amber. Um, someone make a motion.
I move out that we, uh, authorize up to a hundred dollars for a banner for the book sale. To be used from now in perpetuity.
Second, that was me, Trish. Amber.
Now vote.
All in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Yay.
Big banner, big but specific.
Um, so we also, let's see, we had a bake sale last year. If we want to have a bake sale this year, we need. Someone to spearhead the bake sale.
It's worth it financially.
I mean, it made some money.
Was it that sorry?
I didn't print out my book sale notes, right? I, but I visited with them. I don't remember how much we baked something.
It was like by donation or?
Yeah. I mean, it wasn't nothing and we had talked about sort of like amping it up out there with a craft too this year, but that is. It's all, it's all effort and energy that we'll need to go into it.
And weather dependent, honestly.
You wouldn't know what happened, books are all in here.
I mean. Sorry, guys. It's also musty books versus brownies.
That being said, it was also, it increased visibility, like there was clearly something going on at the library because that tent and. People, the dinosaur and sweets were all front and center. So.
Trish is raising her hand.
I'm wondering if, I'm sure there's some sort of signup sheet from last year for all the different responsibilities we had. I'm wondering if. Sort of, um, find that and resend it out and just see, like. If everybody signs up for different stuff for all those different events, then I feel like there could, they can all be a go.
We have the book sale signup that I printed out, um, and it did have Saturday morning bake sale signup, including. But it was most, it was who's gonna bring what baked goods. Um, I don't have. Staffing or being in charge of the bake sale as a duty on here.
Honestly, I think Hazel and Lila manned that bake sale for a long time out there last year. I feel like it was children.
I was, I was out there. I think that was.
You was out there, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we only had it on Saturday morning.
Right.
Do it on Sunday. I'm pretty sure.
I did, I think the presence outside is great, but again, weather dependent and, and I think you guys maybe used a. Uh, Trish, didn't you guys use a, a pop-up tent that was yours?
Uh, it's Amber's.
It was Amber's, okay. Yeah, so we didn't have any of the big tents set up yet outside.
Did we get those tents? You were waiting on them last year.
We have, one of the canopy from the white tent is damaged and has been out of stock forever and I haven't shaken down the guy again in the last couple of months. But I'll put it on my list.
If we decide to do it, I'm happy to bring my pop-up tent down. It's really easy to set up and it fits perfectly in that seating area, um.
It's just tricky, cause it's like, is everyone, you, you won't know until like a couple of days before whether we're doing the bake sale or not. Because of, I mean, if you wanted to not do it during rain, which I think would be miserable and low, low, uh, traffic.
So should we proceed, assuming we will do the bake sale and?
Was it just people on the board making the duties?
Yeah, I think we might have, did we get a donation for coffee? We had warm drinks out there last year, didn't we?
I don't remember.
I brought tea.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
I don't remember if we had coffee. I think we. I brought half and half. I don't know where, make the coffee. Did Janice get it? I.
I can get, I can get them to donate.
I'm, I'm gonna send around the signup sheet for staffing the book sale, um. You'll also notice that there are, there's slots for the dinosaur.
You take turns dressing up.
One can.
Teenage children.
I mean, Nancy, yes, yes.
Isn't it traditionally the newest?
I can't, thank you for your name.
And you want tables?
Yes, Kevin, I was gonna shake you down for tables.
So sign me up for the setup.
Okay, setup time between, all right, so Kevin, tables. That's gonna be, um.
Cause we found that place in Greenfield that took all our books.
I found, I, I've already contacted someone. Somebody's already coming to take all the books. Yeah, they're coming to get them at the, at one on Sunday.
That place in Greenfield was awesome.
But you had to bring them there, right?
I did, but I just put them.
These, these people are coming.
That's good.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
I didn't even know that story existed.
That's, I did hear about that roundabout books. Yeah.
In Greenfield?
Yeah.
And do they pay for them or is it like we're doing you a favor?
They're doing us the biggest favor. We don't pay them, but also like neither of the book sales, last year Westminster West Book Sale and. Like the West Townsend, it might have been like Townsend Cares or something like that. We're both having book sales and took a lot of books and neither of them, them this year. I can't get Westminster West Library to call me back, but.
Been there to be fair, like they've been replacing the insulation or some kind of like heating. So the library has been closed for. I don't know, at least a week.
Okay, yeah, it's, I think.
Okay.
Kind of, it's way easier to have like one entity come and just.
Yes.
Yeah. And get them, not have them in the closet, not have them, not have certain.
So you want us to write down what we wanna make for baked goods?
Yes. Should you, yeah.
I don't know yet, but I, I will make something.
Could be, to be determined.
And do you wanna collect, and for Friday night, do you want that on here too?
Oh, yeah, and we decided that last.
I read the minutes and I was like.
And then she got the invitation from me that was like. Friday.
I got an invitation for, I was like, Emma, did you want me to prove for this or is this my?
No, that's your actual invitation. I didn't realize that it had, nobody had communicated with you about it. So contributions for Friday night as well. So.
So that's the donor.
That's the donor party.
Yeah, what kind of were we talking about?
Finger Foods, um, baked goods by Jim. What other things for the party on Friday? Yeah, cracker and cheese.
You don't wanna bake or eat.
Bring wine.
I think I made like a big, I had like fruity lemonade last year. Kingston black.
Oh, my God, that's my favorite thing.
At my heart, my heart siders, uh, Scott Farms heart cider, Kings, it's Kingston black. It's really good.
It's really good, it's really dry.
Yeah.
Susan, Susan gave me a bottle of it and it, I, uh, I saved it forever and then when I opened it, it was amazing.
Gets better each year.
So the only other piece I would say. So the only other piece I would say would be the raffle baskets are off to a great start. Um. Kevin got a bunch of great wonderful things from Putney School adjacent people. Um. I've gotten things from Oak Meadow and the Spinnery so far, and I just, those are the only two people I've reached out to ever.
And you heard that, that I'll get two tickets to the road engine tour.
That's awesome. Don Smee gave us a cutting word. I reached out to him. Did you send out the list, Amber?
Yeah, so I sent out, um, a, a chart where people, like, if you take a look at it, if you have a personal relationship with.
We sent that out?
It did, yeah. I can resend it.
I saw it. Is it, can you fill it in there? So we can tell who's been where already.
Yes, yeah. So that way, yeah, we don't have multiple people like soliciting different places. So there's a place for you to fill in, like, you know, your name, if you're willing to reach out to that place and then a place to fill in their answer, like yes or no, they'll donate.
So you'll send a list with everyone who's already?
So it's already, I've been populating it.
Okay.
Um, as I go.
Oh, great.
And I believe I made you all editors, so you should be able to go right in there and put, you know, Nancy and then they're gonna ask bike shop and you know, they said yes.
I'll look for that. You sent it in an email, right?
But it's. I shared it directly through Google, so I could send the link through an email as well, if that would be helpful.
Can you resend? That would be great.
Yeah. Um, and if anybody has any ideas for people or places that, um, I missed on the list, like throw them over there, that's fine too.
When you put the baskets together.
Oh, I see it. I see.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think because we're potentially looking at having a lot more product this year.
It's gonna end up being a lot, I feel like.
Yeah, it would might be good to have some time to consider how to put the baskets together. And we also displayed them for the week leading up to the bake sale.
Yeah.
And people, did you get flying rep? We did do it earlier. I don't think it was a lot earlier. And I don't know, did we talk about doing it?
I think we did it maybe just a couple, it was pretty seat of our pants last, last year. I think we set it up like just a couple of days earlier. We could do, we could do it for the full week. If we have everything prepared, we could do it for the full week in advance.
Do you allow people as you bought tickets?
And I don't remember at all.
I don't. And this is only for Friday night?
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good, good. But people can buy raffle tickets on Friday.
Yes.
If, if there's a way for us to not have people have to sign every one of them, I think that would be really good.
How? What do you mean?
Well, just like the, use the number, the number that's on the ticket.
Yeah, but how would?
Because it, it, like people last year, when I was on duty, weren't buying tickets because they got sick of signing the thing.
But the.
Cause they had to fill it out ten times if they bought.
But they're not gonna be there by the time, by the time we pulled the thing. And then it's like number seven hundred fifty-two and it's like, who's that?
And that puts us on us to keep track of every single number and who it was.
See, we can't do that.
Well, you could.
Raffles happen all around the country without people having to fill out forms.
How? Kevin's in charge of the raffle.
Just like the lottery. First name, last initial or something. Something.
Well, you need their phone number.
Well, when you give out the tickets, right, you get two pieces. And so we were, people have to like hang, hang on to their tickets. And if they don't happen to be here when we call the number, then it can just be like the worst.
They'll be here when we call the number.
Yeah.
Need to communicate.
I mean, the other, the other way of doing it is if somebody sells the ticket, they write down number this through this on a piece of paper. And.
Jesus Christ.
I know.
All of us do it, you know, like all the different cashiers doing it.
Yeah, it sounds kind of a. It's not that big of a deal. This is the same way that we used to do the hockey raffle. And everyone just writes out their name.
Sure.
Phone number.
Teenager with really good handwriting and you could sit down there and. Write them all.
Pro raffle.
Pro raffle enter Ray Masuko, the late Ray Masuko, who is wonderful and you, you, um, was a board member of Rockingham Library, used to bring those little address stickers, like his return address sticker, because those on the ticket.
Well, I do think like.
So you tell the complaint people, call them.
That sounds like something where you would do.
Yes.
I mean, is it just their name? I feel like most people, somebody's gonna know, right?
Right, yeah, name and.
They could just put Ruby and like, well, no.
We'll know which Ruby, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like there could be a shorthand, but.
You won the Ginkgo tree. I feel like I, I see no way of that, like we, that all of the different changing cashiers, um.
To keep it a list.
Yeah, I don't see keeping the list as happening.
Um, back to the deadline question, I'm wondering if we can acquire items by like Friday the ninth and oh, that next day is the retreat. Maybe even at the end of the retreat, like I would be willing, well, we can talk about how to put the baskets together, but that way, having a week or the better part of a week to have the raffle baskets on display.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just so people know when they're asking for donations that we're looking to receive things by the ninth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is anyone asking Walker Farm for a mystery tree or not?
A mystery, is that what they did before?
No, the mystery, it's only called the mystery tree because it just showed up on someone like donated it to the library.
Ginkgo tree.
No.
But we don't know from whom. So it wasn't a, the tree wasn't a mystery, the donor was.
The donor was a mystery. Yes, we did know it was a ginkgo tree, but we. Um, but, but it gained, I just, it was a logistical nightmare because I was like, what are we gonna do with this? But it happened to be right around the raffle, so we raffled it and it was a hot item.
Oh, there you go.
So if anybody, I don't know if what, I, I'll, I'll potentially ask them.
Okay.
Do you ask your friend who makes pottery?
Not yet, but I'm gonna reach out to her because she was very excited to, she said to keep asking her, um.
I wonder if I can get Scott Farm to give like a gift certificate to, oh, you did. Okay, you're, they're already on the list.
But did anyone ask them?
I can ask them.
Okay.
Just because they're on the, yeah, if there's.
Yeah.
I'm the president of Scott Farms.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's why I put that on there. Alright, are there any other questions about the book sale right now?
I'm gonna populate the Google Doc that I printed that from with those. And if we don't have enough people, I'm gonna send it out again and shake you guys down. You or perhaps your loved ones that owe you a favor.
Alright.
I might, I might be able to get my son to go into the dino costume. Oh, yes. But he's a big guy.
It is. That's what I was gonna, like, my son did it last year and he's grown like, I don't know, eight inches.
You have to be small.
And he was like barely able.
Oh, then, then forget it. Eight, eight inches, eight inches almost six feet.
Yeah, so that's what, my son's about six feet too. And I don't think he would fit into it this year. Um.
No.
It's pretty small.
No.
But Jessica's son also did it. Luke, who is now like thirteen, I think he's thirteen, maybe he's fourteen. So I, I would volunteer.
My neighbor Lindsay wore the T-Rex, uh, costume for the T-Rex tea party and she has volunteered to do so again. And I will see if she wants to do it, book sale.
Yeah, I mean, I can ask Hazel too. She might be a little into.
Okay.
She would be a good size.
She'd be a great dinosaur.
She would be a good.
How many people do you need for table for like cashier?
Um, I think just if you fill out the slots, um.
I didn't even see the cashier thing.
Oh, it doesn't say cashier.
No, it's just basically vol, your volunteer.
Being there.
Or no, the baked goods or like the?
No, just like.
Are you gonna send that out or should be?
I'm gonna send it out.
Okay. On the Friday night.
Is it supposed to be like dinner food or baked food?
It's like finger foods.
Finger food.
But there can also be. Sweet is okay. Yeah, encouraged.
Um, okay. You wanted to give us an estimate on the call button.
One of the things that we had talked about, um, as part of the strategic plan and that the staff had requested for safety was a silent alarm, like a panic button.
Mm-hmm.
And I called around to a few different places, including the banks, um, and to see who they used. That just happens sometimes when the, the doors settle. And also talked to Brooks Library because they have those. They have multiple ones in different places in the library. And Brooks had no, Brooks doesn't think they ever used it, but they all like that it exists. And I got a quote for, for two wireless uh, battery operated call buttons. And we were talking about having one under the desk and one in the staff room. And the cost, including the first year of monitoring, is one thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents. And I would like to ask the board to, to pay for that. I'll also say that the other thing in tandem with that was the ability to, to upgrade the doors so that we could have the ability to lock them from inside the staff room and my office.
Mm-hmm.
To again, be able to just like put a barrier between us and anybody that we need to get away from.
Yeah.
Um.
What about in the children's room? Do you want to have a call button in the children's room?
It was just, it's just not a staffed area.
Okay.
Um. So no.
So it's more for, it's more for the staff, not, not, yeah.
Oh, yeah, not, not like the public. That's a, especially, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it. I get it.
Yeah. Um, so I had actually Wayne Goodwin, the locksmith, who I, I was afraid he'd retired, but he hadn't. And he came today, but we don't have a quote from him yet. But I'll see if that is possible to fund that out of the maintenance line. You know, just our, our regular operating budget. I'm expecting that to be a couple of hundred dollars. Um. But for this, this is more of a special project that I don't think that we can fund out of, out of the regular operating budget. I wanted to ask the board to cover this cost.
So what, I, I think it's a great idea, but what would be so the thousand dollars, thousand plus is getting the buttons and the.
And the first year of monitoring.
So what is monitoring after that?
It's three hundred and eighty-five dollars a year.
Yeah.
And I think that that could be, that could be planned into, you know, that could be taken care of by the existing coming fiscal year budget, operating budget, and then planned into future budgets without too much of a problem.
Press the button, Emily, who gets the?
Well, it goes to the same, um, people that get the call for our fire panel. So if the fire alarm is going off in the middle of the night, um, so it's Vermont Life Safety. Or is it Vermont Home Safety? I can't remember the name. Oh, it says right here. It's Vermont Life Safety. And they, they would dispatch it to, to like nine one one or whoever.
Yeah.
You know, law enforcement.
So someone would show up, you wouldn't have to talk to them?
No. Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the point. It's like you're in, we, we work alone sometimes like that, you know.
No, I think that makes sense. I was hoping you wouldn't have to.
No, that's the point. It's like you're, you're in a, you're in a situation where you can't like go call nine one one, um, because you're in a tricky situation with someone. This came after like the semi-automatic weapon guy was walking.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, no, it's again, it's. Yeah, and that now is an okay, now that no incident has happened yet, is a great time to think about it. So, and it was something the staff specifically requested that and they'll be, being able to lock the doors.
And the three eighty-five is a yearly fee to the company for them to respond.
Yeah, for the monitoring.
On call.
Yeah. And it's.
So the door lock is included in that?
No, the door locks are different. Yeah, that's a different project.
And you're not asking?
Not at this time. And if it, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, you know, at the point we're in, in the fiscal year with, where I can like look at where money is spent or not spent. I'm hoping that the door upgrade is, you know, can be absorbed by the, by the operating budget, but I don't feel like this can be.
You wouldn't have, this doesn't cover locking your door and those stuff?
No, that's a different, that would be a different thing. I had mentioned them in tandem because they both have to do with just like staff safety at the desk or in a bad situation. So again, the cost is one thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
I moved, I guess, um, to. You need motion, I guess.
Yeah.
To move money to allow, um, emergency call buttons.
I was seconded. That was Penny.
And that was Susan who.
Any questions? All in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Can you see us all raising our hands? We all raised our hands.
It's all been unanimous.
I just assumed it was unanimous.
Yeah.
Which is probably not the right thing to do.
Probably would have heard more disgusting wasn't unanimous.
Okay, so the last thing Emily and I wanted to make sure that all the committees understood that there are new rules about committee meetings.
Yeah.
Um, moving forward.
I've prepared instructions for committees. Actually, I don't think we have to record or zoom them. Um, based on talking to Rachel at Town Hall and the select board and her interpretation of committees that are advisory only, which all of our committees are. None of the committees meet and say like, we're approving this budget, we're spending this money, we're firing the director, you know, that it's not a committee, those aren't committee decisions. And none of our committees, um, have a quorum of the board. So we don't have to record them, but there are rules about minutes and agendas. And I prepared a little sheet and I'll email it to all of us.
And warning them.
Warning them is posting the agenda.
Okay.
You're right. Yeah.
Would it be as simple as posting it on the bulletin board out there?
We have to post it two places besides Town Hall. Town Hall, you can email it to the town assistant town clerk and she'll post it in Town Hall and also on the, on their website. So no, it's not that simple, but it's almost.
So for this agenda, it goes into the vestibule of the co-op.
Oh, right.
And the vestibule here.
Perfect.
And then Janice told me she usually puts one up at the post office too. Um, okay. Yeah.
Just walk down, thank you.
To a committee meeting would have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so every time a committee meets, it's the one the garden committee meets. And it has to be posted forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
In advance.
So you said you're in distributing something?
Yeah, I'll email it to all of you.
And you do need to take minutes?
Yeah, even if the minutes just say, we talked about the garden. But, but you have to say, I have it on the sheet, what it has to say.
To be posted or the agenda?
I think just the, it just has to be warned and the agenda has to be.
And it's probably the minutes just need to be available, so we should.
I think the agenda can just be one, we are going to talk about the garden.
I did, yeah, I, I have an example garden committee. Actually, it's an imaginary garden committee meeting in which the, I've prepared a faux agenda and minutes, um, for, that are in the thing.
Weeks.
Um, but, but the minutes will have to be sent to the assistant town clerk to be posted with the rest of our meeting minutes.
Do we do this on our own for the committee or do you direct meetings or?
I don't.
Does it?
I don't do anything.
I think we're, I think we do it on our own. But, but I do think it can be really.
Very basic.
Simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, my understanding is that we don't have to do the Zoom link or record it unless somebody requests.
I don't even, I don't even know if that is necessary.
Okay.
For the committees.
Okay.
So. No, I don't think so.
Alright.
And committee instructions. After talking to.
You'll be sending them to us so we know.
Yeah, and the email for the assistant town clerk is part of the instructions, like all of, and, and the example of what you need to record in the minutes. The minutes can be very, very basic, but they do have to say who was there. Um, you guys don't make motions and pass things in committee meetings. It's just not part of, so they, they can be really basic. So Los Angeles.
And there could even just be a template, like this, maybe this template existed before Janice, I don't know, but I just used Janice.
Right.
Template for.
Sure.
This agenda. So it could be a similar, that there's like a template for committee meetings and you just have to sort of edit the different field.
Would we do that as well, like for, for all committees for institutional long-range planning?
Yeah.
And where do these rules come from?
The department or the, uh, Vermont.
Open meetings?
It's Vermont, yeah, Secretary of State. No, Attorney Vermont. It is the Secretary of State, yeah. And, um, it was, the new laws were this last legislative season.
And the intention is transparent. It's like that public bodies are transparent in there.
But we didn't use to.
Reeling the feelings.
We didn't use to record or zoom all of the board meetings.
Right.
Until this.
Alright, okay, um, summer storytelling fire extravaganza. Go, Trish.
Hey, um, so yeah, just for those of you who weren't here, just as a quick reminder, last time we talked about having some sort of event. Um, in. Having some sort of event, um, in the stone seating area. For the summertime and we had come up with the idea of having a campfire slash storytelling slash some mores. Keeping it really simple, um. And I volunteered to sort of spearhead this and I'm happy to, um, storytell. And then I think it was. Maybe Ben who had also suggested, well, we could ask people to come with stories as well. Um, so it's gonna be really low key, we're just providing a fire and some mores. I am suggesting the date of Thursday, June fifth. Um, and so I, I double checked with Emily that that still works for the library. Um, and so before moving forward on that, I just wanted to see if there are any other board members who would be around for that. Um, and then more just around, like, timing suggestions. Um, whether we wanted to start around dusk, because it's a campfire. Whether we feel like families will come back out, it's a school night, you know, um. So, yeah, just up for a brief discussion about this.
I would start pretty late that date, right? Because we're heading toward the salsa.
I know, it's, when is sunset?
Certainly after eight, I would think. It could start before sunset and go into sunset.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, you know, even starting at like, uh, like when the library is closing. That way people could be at the library and then the event could start and then it might not get super dark, but. People could also.
What were the days that the food truck park operated last?
Sunday and Friday.
Okay.
So it's at eight twenty-five PM is sunset.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of late, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's like, do we make this like an after-school event? Do we make it a dinnertime event? Do we make it an after-dinnertime event, you know? So I mean, first, like. You know, just people's availability that day. Um, it would be nice if there was more than one board member, but no pressure. And then, yeah, just public opinion on when you think that it would be most attended. I'm, I'm not entirely certain.
I think it would be more kids who would be coming or would be interested. Because I'd say earlier, if, you know, if it's sort of focused to young people. What kinds of libraries close?
Six.
Six. Yeah, I'd say start at six.
Now, Emily, if we, if we did it after hours, like starting at six, we can still have the library available, the inside of it for like using the bathrooms and stuff?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Do other people feel good and supportive of like a six PM start time for something like this?
I, I can go, it's a good day for me. That's Penny.
Well, then, unless anybody has any like negative opinions on it or anything. Um, I think we'll, we'll go forward with that. Great, awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. I think I can be here too. I finished teaching in Brattleboro on Thursdays, like at five, so. I'll come have smores for dinner.
What about a savory smore?
We could bring like the mountain pie makers and get really tricky. Any other business? Public comment, nobody's here. Uh, the date for the next meeting will be May twentieth. But we will all see each other on May tenth and May sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
We're just gonna get tired.
Did we firm up the June?
Yeah.
Meeting in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
I got lost in the discussion about the baskets. Is there a time that we're getting together to put them together? I can't remember sort of where that landed.
Goodies will be here if you guys wanted to come after the. Retreat.
Put them together to the retreat?
Yeah, or even before, um, I mean. I, I may have some, I, I don't know if I can be here before or after the retreat, but. Um, I can. I could do that.
Or if you want to meet earlier.
You should probably look for some, some baskets to have.
You guys are also welcome to meet at the library in a time that we are closed and I can give you a key.
I do suspect like if we wait until after this weekend, like baskets will be flowing back into the secondhand stores post Easter. So we can.
I found a ton of baskets for super cheap at Goodwill.
Yeah, yeah. And we were saying the guy, um, the Moose on Main guy has had like a pickup truck full of them parked outside. Maybe he would donate. A half a dozen baskets, um, I don't know. I, I didn't actually put him on the list, so that could be his. Business contribution potentially. Okay, I can't remember if I need to like make a motion to like.
We do.
Anybody can. We'll all make a motion to end the meeting at.
I second it. Susan seconded it.
All in favor? Thanks, everybody.
And thank you, Trish, for tuning in from. Tropical Wonderland.
Yeah.
Are you? Yeah, where in Florida are you?
I'm in Naples. Yeah, my parents are down.
Cool, that's on the Gulf side, right?
It is, yeah, it's about like forty-five minutes south of Fort Myers, so. Pretty south, it's gonna be eighty and sunny every day this week. Is quite, quite a shock to the system.
Living up.
Well, thanks all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna log out, okay.